You let me know when. I've, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the April 12 Town Council Information Work Session. Let's begin by recognizing that the entire council minus Councilwoman Bodine are present. At this time, I'd like us to join with Pledge of Allegiance.
We defy the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, petition under God, for the injustice for all.
All right, okay. We have a busy schedule ahead of us. I know I've said this a few times and I'll say it again. One of the best things about this group that we have up here is that we know how to take care of business and be efficient yet expeditious as well. So we're, let's get down to the town's business, which is why we're here. Staff to present water park fund budget. We normally, you know, have asked the, you gave an overview, have asked the council, how many pages do we have here?
Two.
Then let's just go, let's just take the entire document and we'll just ask the council. I'll start with Charlie taking questions. Larry, just FYI, I'm going to run back and get my glasses. I'll be right back out, but we'll, we'll start with Charlie.
I don't have any questions about the budget, so I'll, I'll hold off on anything else for right now. Thanks.
Yes, I had a, I guess, a question. I'm looking at the gross profits FY '22 as of December 31, 752, 925. And I know that's like only halfway through the fiscal year, but we also really only have one month when the water park will be open before the fiscal year ends. Is that budgeted gross profit for '23, is that realistic, given the expectations of how '22 will end up? I see. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
I have a question. So when you, for that first line item, reserves allocation, you said that you needed to build that into the budget to make a balance. So is there a pretty good expectation then that that will, that will be made during the fiscal year that will be earned and there won't, you won't need that fully? Right. Okay, great. Thank you. And I have one other question. And this, in the presentation for the utility fund, and, okay, I think you answered it. Never mind. Go ahead.
The best questions overcome by events. Okay, thanks. If we have no other questions of Dale, we can move on to the next item, which, which means don't go anywhere, Dale. Staff to present utility fund budget. Okay, you know what? I thought we were just doing the whole thing.
Oh, sorry. I just, Carla mentioned she had some information.
Okay. Do you have a question? You want to start? Or do you want to give an overview? Do you want to give an overview of the?
Carla, did you want to give an overview of the rates?
And if I can just share with that some of my thoughts that I had in that session with which staff was, last year the council hit a home run. I mean, we, we learned things from COVID. You know, we learned that, that our citizens want a safe and more, you know, you know, friendly environment when they take their family. We don't necessarily need buses and buses of, you know, out of county kids, you know, coming down and getting discounts and doing all of that. So we, we made all the right choices last year, you know, and end up with, with the way costs have increased, you know, since then on, you know, materials, everything. It just, you know, we're lucky that we did what we did, you know, last year because we still have to, you know, tweak it again this year. But the idea is, is to make it town of Chesapeake Beach citizen friendly. And we did in this case also, you know, we definitely wanted to make it, you know, Calvert County friendly as well. So that's just my two cents, Charlie.
So I guess the, I have a bigger question here that may not be appropriate, so feel free to delay this, but at what point, where has the decision already been made as to what we're going to do for attendance in terms of residents and county residents and non-county residents?
I think we're staying the same as last year, which was Tuesday and Wednesday for town and county only, and then, which is what the people definitely want it. And then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is when we, you know, open it up and make our money.
Okay.
All right. Sorry.
No questions.
All right. Greg?
Good, thank you.
No questions.
Peggy?
Actually, now that we've looked at the rates, I have one little question, because knowing the, what's coming up for the utility rates for water and such, was that taken into consideration also with the cost for the season passes and entrance?
From the water rate perspective? Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir. Sorry. I did have one question. Under the expense items, capital repairs, the $69,500, I presume, Jay, you have signed off on that? That looks good to you?
Yes, we, we had the maintenance tech and several other people generate a list and did a walk around and I looked at it. And I will always caution that anything could happen, it's sometime unknown, but as of now, I think we're fine.
I ask that because, yes, in the last several years, we've had several unexpected repairs come up, so I just wanted to make sure that we feel that that's adequate.
Correct. And one, one thing for the room, we can air test and we can do a lot to that water park, but you can never simulate 350,000 gallons of water until you put it in there. And that's when things tend to move.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dale, staff to present utility fund budget. Thank you, Carla.
Oh, no. Is that better? Sorry about that. So if we look at the rate increase proposal, it's two-pronged, if you will. First of all is the town staff is proposing applying fixed fees by EDU, and this is consistent with the county. The other thing we're proposing is an increase in the variable charge, and it would be a tier structure. And this would really help promote water conservation. So if you look at the chart, you can see the current rates per thousand gallons and the different ranges of consumption and what the proposed rates would be for fiscal year '23. We also put on this slide fiscal year '24 because this may be something that Town Council wants to consider next year, come, you know, next year, if it's something that we need to do as a town. But the bottom line is, the higher the consumption, the higher the rate for that bill and period. So continuing with the rate increase proposal, what, what does this mean? So it means for the fixed charges, the $50 quarterly fee would stay the same for all residential dwellings. But for commercial accounts, they will be calculated by EDU, which would be at 190 gallons a day, and this ties into our water and sewer manual. So the commercial accounts that have more than one connection would be charged a $50 fixed fee for each additional connection per quarterly billing period. And this would be consistent with Calvert County. I, I will say although this would be an increase for the commercial accounts, the town would still be significantly lower than if this would, if they would be paid, you know, receiving these services from some of our neighboring jurisdictions. So you can see on this slide, if the rate proposal was accepted by Town Council, the incremental revenue would be about $222,000 for fiscal year '23. If we implemented the same variable increase in fiscal year '24, that would bring in another incremental, $98,000. And between these two, it should help the town become self-sufficient in utility fund. And then the chart at the bottom, you can see even if the town of Chesapeake, Town of Chesapeake Beach was going to implement the new rates for fiscal year '23 as well as '24, we would still be lower than our nearby jurisdictions comparing their rates the fiscal year '22. This next slide is just a quick average residential impact. And specifically what it does, it looks at the four different ranges of consumption, and it compares an average bill within each of these range with the current rates to the average bill within each of these ranges with the new rates. And on average, you can see what the quarterly increase would be, and then we split it down to a monthly increase, understanding our utility bills are billed quarterly. And then, just in summary, we are recommending that Town Council considers the fiscal year '23 rate proposal as provided and then reevaluate in fiscal year '24. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Dale. Now, now, I'm going to start with Peggy and some questions, but just a couple housekeeping items. One, I'll ask the council to make sure that your microphone is on when you speak. I realize it's an exercise that we haven't done in a while before it was, you know, turn the mute off, you know? So if you will, that'll be good for, for, you know, recording it. Dale, when we go over this, do you, I mean, this is the council's, you know, sixth budget here. What do you think we should do? Two pages at a time, the first three? What do you, what do you?
For, for each of the funds, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, no, 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 for, for council questions. The entire budget or?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
I'm going to ask the, the Town Council to ask you questions, okay?
Okay.
And I'm saying, should we go page by page or just the entire budget? Which would you, which would you prefer?
Page by page is fine with me.
All right, let's do that then. But let me start out by, by saying, thanks for breaking this down by month because, you know, I use around 10, and it just helps me understand that my, my bill will go up about $4.56 a month. And if, if my wife finds out, she's going to tell me that I'm wasting $5 a month by taking them along to hot showers, so I think the word's out. But no, thank you, because that puts it into a perspective, you know, for me. That's quite frankly, everything else goes up. But beginning with Peggy, I guess we'll, we'll try page by page. Do you have any questions on the first page, Peggy?
I have no questions on the first page.
I have a question, but more about the presentation, just some of the items that were covered.
And Peggy, if I could stop you, was there anything on the presentation you wanted to ask? Okay, thanks.
Number one, I like, I like how you laid that out, and I like the idea of conserving water, encouraging our residents to conserve water, so I am generally in favor of this approach. Just curious, in terms of the grant funding, have we ever lost grant funding or not been able to apply in the past because our utility funds were not self-sufficient?
Do you want me to answer that question? This was kind of in, in public, one time before I was mayor and you were on the council, we got caught.
Uh huh.
I'll leave it at that.
Uh huh, all right. And then I had one other question here. How were these categories decided upon, 1 to 4,000 versus 1 to 5,000, that kind of thing?
I think it's standard within the industry, but it's the way our accounting system is set up as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't have any general questions about the budget. I would like somebody to explain to me the North Beach rates on that table. I didn't spend a ton of time trying to figure it out, but someone could humor us on what that's based on.
Sure. So North Beach has a flat fee up to 4,000 gallons. So if you use 1 or if you use 4,000, you're going to pay $42.20 for water and 126 for sewer. Then everything over 4,000, you pay the, the fixed fee at 6.25 and 7.25 per thousand gallons.
Sure. As I said, I don't have any general questions. I, I applaud this, the rate increase for the utility fund. I think it's way, way overdue. My opinion is this 10 years overdue, moving in the direction of making this self-sufficient. I'm in favor of steeper rates for the higher, higher users. I'm content with what you have, but I would be in favor of even steeper rates. And I'm certainly in favor of the 2024 rates, reaching the 2024 rates in the time prescribed. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Larry?
Thought a lot about this, and given my professional career, I'm a strong supporter of the encouraging water conservation by users paying more with the more water that they use. However, the thought that struck me the other day was looking around our town and realizing that a number of our businesses here in town are restaurants, which have, have to have very high water usage rates for sanitation purposes. And it makes it very difficult for them to try to conserve that water because of the standards they have to meet for this. And this is somewhat going to penalize them for the requirements they have to meet for cleanliness of their facilities. Just an observation that I support encouraging people to conserve water, but realizing that there are in our town some businesses that just cannot conserve the water because of what they do. And this will, in effect, penalize them because of that, just as a, as an observation. I think that's all I've got on the presentation. I will have a question on the expenses when we come to it.
Yeah, bear with me, I have a handful of, of questions here. I'll try to make this brief. First of all, the, the progressive, the rates as they're laid out here, are they, are they actual, are they truly progressive? So in other words, if I use 4,001 gallons of water, will my bill be, I'm trying to find the chart here to cite the example. My, my, my bill will be 4,000 times $2.21 and then one gallon at $2.26?
It would be $2.26 for each gallon used, or each thousand.
So it's not a progressive.
Correct.
I, I'm just going to offer some feedback here for my fellow council and, and staff to think about is, in addition to, to businesses, it seems to me that this also punishes a family of four over a single guy who lives alone. And I, and I, I think that's something we should consider. I mean, I'm all for encouraging saving water, don't, don't misunderstand, but if I'm a family of four in a house with four bathrooms, I'm paying significantly more for my water than me personally, who happens to be a single guy living alone. And, and I'm not sure how I feel about that. It's effectively a tax. So I make that point and I'll move on. The $50 fixed fee, do I remember historically correctly that that was designed to offset the notion that we had a fair number of weekend residents, residents who weren't here all the time and therefore, you know, had water hookups but essentially used, you know, 200 gallons of water a month on Saturday and Sunday? Does that have any basis in, is that accurate?
It's, it's partially accurate. The, the $50 fixed fee came about, we had some expert back when this was much began, you know, discussed when Mayor Wall was sitting in his chair. It was recommended by some of the industry experts as a way to just really help us reach our guaranteed, you know, revenue level. And it was really what helped us, you know, you know, resolve that contentious issue. Couple things there is, one, what we failed to do at the time was to, or what we didn't do, was to make everybody pay per IDU. In other words, you know, we'll just say, I hate to say a restaurant, but, you know, a hotel. They, I pay one $50 fee, okay, and a hotel should pay more than 150. That's what we failed to do then, but that we're rectifying now. That never, it should be per, it follows the county. But in, in Charlie's, you know, question, that was something that I made note of when I was on council, and I certainly lived in a, a neighborhood of second homeowners. And when my neighbors, second homeowners, you know, when they figured out that, okay, so I, I pay $50 a month and I come down and my, you know, my water's working, my toilet's refushing, I can take a shower, that they equated it to, they, at the time, you know, with, with their cable. They were paying monthly cable just to, you know, basic, just to have it here when they came. And everybody was happy with that. So they were like, okay, that's a fair enough price and have to, because in the old, old days, you know, people used to have to shut off their water when they left and then have, have town hall somehow turn it back on for them when they came back in. And that was just unreasonable moving, you know, moving forward. So that's sort of the history, if you, if you will.
Yeah.
You know? Okay. This time, I, I said page one for everybody. I'm going to say the entire document. Let's just go through that. I'll, let me go back again with Peggy.
I, okay, I'm not done yet, but I'm happy to pause and go back around if that's what you would like to do.
Okay, that's fair enough. You're good? Okay. Just the entire document.
I don't have any questions on page two, but with respect to Charlie's question, can you tell us what the average household, how many gallons it does use? You don't have to tell me right now, but maybe if you could come back to council with a sort of range for what each household uses.
So you're saying within each range or the average for all our residents?
What do you mean? I know, yeah, I could just, the average for the residents.
Okay.
Not.
For all the ranges combined?
Not, not for being, you know, how many gallons do they use will be how many gallons they use. The ranges don't matter. It's not cash.
Yes, I can provide that.
Volume, yeah.
And if I could just, just go back on what Charlie said too, I want to make it clear that in the multiple work sessions with this, this budget here, I spent more time talking about the family of four than I did anything else. I spent a lot of time on that because it, it hit home and I, of course, I told the story, I always did, how my son used to take five-hour showers and everything else, you know, and I'll tell you that joke later. But, yeah, I, I mean, it did, I spent a lot of time addressing that. So yes, it was more than, than thought of by, you know, by us. So thank you. Keith?
So just, just one.
Entire document.
Yeah, just one comment, and that is, the, the one thing that I was thinking about was, in terms of, and I've just lost it, so that's great.
You talking about the fixed fee for 50 bucks?
No, no, I had it and now it's gone.
You'll come back.
I will raise my hand if it comes back to me.
Ask me tomorrow.
There you go. Thank you.
Jay, how many wells do we have in town?
That produce water?
Yeah.
Three, three.
I see you had two on the list. I guess the third one is.
When you say list.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, there's a five-year capital improvement for wells?
He's talking about the utility fund, the five-year capital expenditure that we have.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I was, I was just, just wondering how many we had and.
And I was I was just just wondering how many we had and. I presume that we've got nothing on the horizon for the next four or five years for Richard, they are the third well, as far as maintenance is concerned.
Correct.
Both further questions, thank you.
Thank you. You remember, you're back, okay.
Thank you, so the one question I had was just about timing. And so definitely during it, doing it during the pandemic would have been the wrong time. But it also seems like right now, there's um costs are going up for a lot of different things, gas being one of them. And so now we're saying, okay, now your water rates are going to go up as well, so. I'm just, I just throw that out for thoughts and to just be sure everybody's aware of that. And I am also interested in in following up a little bit on Charlie's comment in terms of, you know, what would this look like if they paid the the first category rate for that first four thousand gallons? And then it's only the stuff over that four thousand gallons, of course, then how do you figure out when the next one kicks in? That would be the question, I guess, in terms of that. But I'm sorry, what? Oh, yeah, all right, so anyway, that was my other um my other interest was just trying to follow that logic a little bit more to see if there was a way of 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 not, you know, charging a family or whomever that next higher rate if they only went over by a couple of gallons or something like that.
We'll all learn.
All right, thanks.
We'll know. Thank you. I'm sorry, no, I thought he he said he was done.
An observation and a question, uh, the observation being. In looking at the various budgets that we've been discussing, and now we're on the utility fund, but we had discussions on others before, and in almost every case, we're talking about increasing rates of some sort. I'm I'm concerned of being stopped in Rollins at some point by someone saying, wait a minute, you guys always tout on your general fund, the huge surplus that we have, why are we seeing these rates for everything else go up all the time? How how do we answer that?
Well, I I I don't mind answering that, you know, because I'm I'm probably the one that's always in Rollins who's going to get the question. You know, one, we, I I don't think we really tout our reserves, it's just hard to not answer that question when it comes up. I think what we tout is is, or I tout anyhow, is that the fact that that the council has, you know, um, you know, lowered the uh, you know, real estate tax rate for, you know, six years in a row, you know, we have, you know. However, you know, the uh, the water, the the water and sewer fund is it's it's a separate fund, it's an enterprise fund, it has to be sustainable. And 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 that's just it, you know, and and we cannot be in the business of using general fund money to pay for water. It's just not fair to uh, you know, the citizenry. It's just not fair for some for 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 somebody to have to pay somebody else's water. So yeah, and 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 once again, just to to echo what was said um by Dale. I mean, you know, I remember fully being in discussions the two years of the the pandemic and saying, you know, I know what we got to do, but I also know what we can't do. And and at the time was we we had to raise these rates, but we couldn't. Pandemic, we'd never been in a pandemic before, and this is, this was serious, people were losing their jobs. People were not coming up, it wasn't, it was, everybody was feeling it, you know. And 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 yeah, you know, things break and things have have gone up, including, so you know, we we gave everybody, including ourselves, you know, a break for two years. And right now, you know, it's time to, you know, pay pay the piper, if you will, you know, the um, you know, materials have gone up, we just, you know, we we have to do what we have to do. And and to be clear, the um, the town water park and the town, um, I guess it's it's the wastewater treatment plant, no, that, you know, the towns cost are are going up, we, the town, are going to be encouraging these increases as well, because we just got to do what we got to do. So I I would say that the um, you know, the the pandemic is what also, you know, made us do, because the first year of it, I I remember that was the third year of of our first term, and that would have been an ideal time to do it. But my God, we had bigger things on our hands than to worry about. We couldn't even get our, we couldn't even get, there wasn't even a vaccine out then, you you know. And then last year, we were all just fighting to get our vaccines, you know. So it 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 was tough times, but yeah, we we did the right thing then, and now we're just doing what we have to do now. And we knew then that we were going to be doing this now, so it's just.
And then I I did have one question, actually, I'm asking this on behalf of Councilmember Bodine on town debt. In that spreadsheet, you show uh three columns on interest savings that paid off in various years. Do we have any plans to do that?
Not for fiscal year twenty three, those interest rates that we have on those loans are very low, like one percent.
Okay.
How much are they down?
One percent, I think two of them are one and the other one's one point one.
Yeah, that's pretty low.
Yeah, that is pretty low. And just remind me, needs M Q F A approval, who's that?
Maryland Quality Financing, I can't remember, I'm trying to remember what it stands for.
Did a good job. I got the word right, I got the Maryland right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, and Charlie.
Yeah, so um, I have two two more points, so I just want to go back to the fifty dollars and and the notion of progressive. I I I don't want to ask you guys to do a bunch of extra work, but I'd like to see a a a spreadsheet that shows how we might achieve the same revenue gain by by means of what would be a truly, I I use the term truly progressive, I don't know if that's fair, but what would what would actually be a progressive distribution of those costs? What the difference would be in the increase between four and six thousand and six and eight thousand, or whatever the cut points are that that you guys came up with. I think that might, that strikes me as a little, as something that might be a little more uh fair. I I could be wrong, but I wouldn't mind seeing a spreadsheet that shows that um or something close to it. Um, and then the last question, the last question I wanted to raise has to do with all the new units. And I don't know if, Jay, if you can answer this, or if if John Castro, um, or or maybe Larry can answer this. So we have a lot of new units that are now online, so my question is, what's the, what's the break even point? You know, if a new, if a new housing unit comes online in, let's say, all of the heritage, and all of a sudden those folks are paying uh their fifty dollars plus their their fees, are we? Are we incrementally making more money and is that figured into this budget? Is that another way that we can see a an increase in revenue? Or do we basically break even for every house, so it so it's moot?
I can tell you that Jay can't answer that question.
Yeah.
I, go ahead.
I I was going to say, we um really lose money per connection, this this fund is losing money by the cost to maintain those lines and infrastructure improvements, there is no profit for added connections.
Right. Okay, well, thank you, we'll take this up a week from Thursday when we when we vote on it. Next, town council to discuss comprehensive plan. Do you want to? Chris, you want to give a quick overview, or you think you've done that enough and we can just kind of let the council? I I I think the council can just take it right up, I I really do, you know. And if you don't mind, Charlie, I'll start with you and.
If he could mention, if he could talk about the letter we got and his thoughts on that. Is that all right?
I I think it would be unusual to take one's comment.
Okay.
To give someone that sort of a priority. We do have a, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, we have the, it's in the comprehensive list of comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, um, Mr. Charlie.
Yes, I don't mind starting, but I I might ask for a little bit of guidance in what you're looking for from us at this point. Uh, hard suggestions, things that we would change, or a general sense of the pulse of the council, what 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 are you looking for?
I I actually um have find us to be very successful, and I just say, the floor is yours. Go for it.
So there's been quite a bit of uh back and forth, I've talked with almost every one of my um uh compatriots here. There are two, and so I'll just be, to be brief, uh and and start the dialogue, uh going first was a treat, thanks, Pat, appreciate that. I'm going to throw out two uh particular things that I would like to work out a way to adjust uh as it's currently written. The first is the thirty-five foot height limit. It is not that I am opposed to a reasonable height limit, I think thirty-five is um thirty-five from the ground is not the right number. In doing a little bit of research, I I talked to Chris, I talked to some other folks. I think at a minimum, it should be thirty-five feet above a ground level that allows for uh the building of flood resilient garage or similar underneath. And I would support that being limited to areas that are at flood risk, which which is pretty much most of the town anyway. So that's number one, uh that I would like to get a discussion going about changing. And the second is in our two business districts. I believe that we should support a commercial under residential model in both of those districts. Uh, I do understand concerns around that, um, but my understanding, again, from talking to to Chris, who is an expert, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Chris, so feel free to correct me if I'm misspeaking. That is the best way, the most uh highest percentage way of having active, non-boarded up commercial districts. And um everyone talks about small town charm, I love small town charm, boarded up businesses are not small town charm. And I, uh, what I understand from my research is there, that's how we can support uh something rather than nothing. So uh I throw out those two comments and I will yield the floor, uh but I'm happy to answer questions if people have them specific to what I've raised.
I'll echo my colleague's comments, uh, I've expressed these concerns before as well on the thirty-five feet height limitation coupled with the change in how it's measured from grade. Same reasons that Charlie just said, I think it uh effectively removes any incentive to provide protection from coastal flooding and to provide off-street parking, indeed, the draft plan discourages such development because you're then limited as to how much occupied space you can have. Some other comments, concerns, um. It it just seems to me in a number of places that the vision that is stated in the comprehensive plan does not, is not in accordance with the details of the comprehensive plan. Couple examples. The vision talks about economic development and natural resource-based businesses that promote employment opportunities for all income levels within the capacity of the state's natural resources, public services and public facilities are encouraged. Also in the vision statement, it talks about growing and economically vibrant, encourage the formation of new businesses, open to all ages and income levels, specifically points out a lack of housing for what I'll call moderately priced units and also for retired seniors. So while while the, I agree with the vision statement, that vision statement does not seem to carry forward into the details of the plan. And I I think uh with a number of the proposals that are in there, it it's basically saying, I'm here, let's close the doors. And and that's very concerning to me because I think from an economic development point of view, we, any any municipality has to continue to have some appropriate growth, or it's going to go in the wrong direction. And I don't think the draft comprehensive plan encourages that kind of appropriate economic development going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to interject before I go to Councilman Morris. I guess I I do want to start, and I should have started by once again publicly thanking the 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 board, the planning and zoning board for, and and Chris for all their hard work and for over these, you know, many, many months. They're really, they were really an outstanding group to, you know, come up with the product that they did. Secondly, I'm sure, I I didn't receive any written comments from Councilwoman Bodine, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, mention, as as we all know, that I do believe that she supports the comprehensive plan as it is. And in particular, since it was mentioned about the thirty-five foot, I believe she uh does support thirty-five foot from ground up. Okay, um, so having said that, just I'm I'm sure when she's back, she'll reiterate her points much better than I can do. I do want to say, just so it's 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 clear, and we, like, I clarified this with with Chris earlier and and with Larry in a meeting, just to give people an idea of of heights, okay? Every, everybody's house at this dice here, okay, including Valerie, falls under the thirty-five foot limit. So there's no, somebody here has one over, that's, that means Seagate, you know, where I live, where Valerie lives, where you live, they're all, we're all, we're all in in compliance. So when you when you look at that, you have to understand, if you're talking about having, you know, room for parking and thirty-five foot, take, take Seagate, you know, take Valerie's house and just say, okay, then it would be that high. And um, it's pretty high. So I'll I'll just, I just wanted to be sure that we were clear on those two points that I wanted to 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 mention. And um, I'll give the floor to Councilman Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know we've been on this path for quite a while. I believe town hall has pushed hard regarding public outreach regarding this plan. There's plenty of due diligence there. I've attended several public meetings regarding public outreach, some held public venues, some held private venues. All things considered today, um. I could be in support of voting for the document as it's presented. That's a trust in the process. That's a trust in the commissioners, who I hold in the highest regard in this process. Chris is, works for the town and he's an advisor. And what he should be doing, this channel, is certainly presenting outside of the box ideas and bringing things in front of people for deeper thinking, more comprehensive thinking, but at the end of the day, what the appointed commissioners want to have in that document, that that's, they're charged with that. Not Chris. So I'm mostly interested in what the folks who have voted on that document have had to say. I want to underscore that the public sentiment regarding growth in town was very strong, zero to 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 small growth. Now, I'm not anti-growth, um, I'm supportive of limited growth and I disagree that we've shut our doors. I think that's um, that's kind of harsh way to put that, that we certainly put a lot of brakes on, we've run out of a little bit of room than we've had twenty-five years ago and, but uh. The comprehensive plan is just a guiding document, too, it's not a law. So I'll be keenly watching what does get passed, the effort in the intent of of making the changes in the document law. That's really where the rubber hits the road. There's going to be many of unique circumstances. Everybody, we've got a quite a diverse community here. I live inland, so my colleagues live right on the water, um, and I do share their concern with climate change and sea level rise. However, uh, I think that many of those concerns, and I would have to say most of the concerns I've heard, may be a place for the appeals process here in town. Kind of wade through unique situations. I wouldn't want to be somebody to tell somebody that that's forecast to be underwater in fifty years that they can't raise up, try to somehow salvage their property value. But I do think that those are case-by-case basis and they belong in the appeals, or maybe. I had a question about the vision of incorporating and encouraging additional subsidized housing in town. Seems, it it appears that where we've surpassed thresholds that the state recommends. I see both sides of that, though. So I say that I could accept the document the way that it's been drafted, I mean, I mean that because the um subsidized housing, we do have, seem to have our our share of that here in town. I'm interested in knowing how many of those individuals work at the Rod and Reel, I know that that's been one of the arguments that 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 they've brought forth. And have more people that live in town, that can work for them. I would, I'm glad to see that the state is incrementally raising some of the minimum, raising the minimum wage, because that should help, help uh encourage people to get out and go to work, uh, do something there. On the other side of that, well, also with the subsidized housing, it, that to me seems a little more appropriate in a, in a more of an urban development. a little more appropriate in a, in a more of an urban development, where you've got public transportation, you've got easy access, closer access to a plethora of cornucopia of programs and benefits that, that can help those folks, help to get them on their feet. Then on the other side of that, one of my colleagues pointed out, and I'm, I'm somebody you all know, I reserve my right to change my mind right up to the time of vote. That's just because I'm all things considered, every inch of the way here. And somebody mentioned, what about the children of those families? You have children that are underprivileged. The, the arc and the trajectory for their life doesn't compare to those, the children in these zip codes. So those children live in our communities and are around the, all of us and these people. They go to our schools. We have a state-of-the-art library going up. And so I do believe there's a fundamental responsibility in trying to help lift up folks who are, that deserve help that way. So let's see. I could be in support of some changes, if some changes were brought forth. I'd just like to mention, I had a colleague that told me that I was a waffler. Said, Greg, you're waffling. Right? I said, well, wait a minute here, I'm independent. So if I'm looking at both sides of things, of course I need to, you know, I need to get on this side and look at it good, and be on that side to say, what does this look like from over here? Get on that side and see, be, and feel how it looks like from the other side. You want to call that, well, I don't call that waffling. I call that, you know, thinking about stuff, you know, in a broad sense. These aren't simple decisions. The, the comprehensive plan has been, I don't want to say a complex process, but it, it's been something that we've all endured. And we're fortunate that we've had commissioners appointed that have stayed with it and helped to push this thing to where it is today. It's not perfect, and I'm sure no matter what we do, do the comprehensive plan to change it, if anything, there's going to be people that are going to complain about it. And I'm ready for that. I'm ready for folks that are going to complain about the utility rate increases. I'm ready for that. Just to mention a couple of the things that I could be in support of if there was something brought forth. I've been a staunch advocate of trying to be creative with parking here in town. We know that parking is, in particular places in town, it's tough. I could be convinced possibly to do some sort of parking underneath, although the contrary to that is, as far as walkability is concerned, you have people walking through town, are they walking by cars, or are they walking by business storefront or even residential? It's probably better if those buildings are on the ground, but I, I have to be, we have to be open-minded with some of this stuff, folks. Yeah, and particularly regarding residences that are under threat of sea level rise and the climate change, being able to give those property owners a little bit of flexibility or some faith, a little bit of faith that, and this isn't going to happen overnight and be tomorrow, but giving them some faith that there is recourse somehow, some way for them to help salvage the usability of their property somehow. And every situation is going to be unique, but again, I believe that that's probably better suited for the appeals process. I'll continue to evaluate all of these things through, and then if we end up voting on this next Thursday, I'll certainly be ready, one way or the other. I'm looking forward to moving this whole thing along and I'll be looking forward to making some of these things, making this, this document, these document changes law, particularly with the zoning map, making sure things match up there. So that's my two and a half years with comprehensive plan, all kind of coming out right there. And I'll pass this on to the next person. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I think it's a great plan. I, I think they've done excellent work. They spent two years gathering information from our residents, trying to capture the feeling, the mood, the directions that the majority of folks want the town to go in. And I think they've done a good job with that. I'm not really interested in trying to wordsmith this, you know, page by page, line by line. I think it's a, they've done a wonderful job. I do support the 35 feet from ground. I think it's an issue of concept versus context. And so conceptually, yeah, it sounds good. Yeah, I want to be able to park, you know, to not be affect, housing not to be affected or businesses not to be affected by flooding. And yeah, you should raise them up. But the context is what the mayor gave us. We already know, we know what 35 feet looks like. You can put a garage under there. You can have space to live above that. So in my mind, in some ways, we're making arguments that don't really fit the context of where we live, all that much. And as Greg has mentioned, we do have the appeals board to take those things forward. If somebody needs a little extra space, they can go there and ask for that because there is flooding. So this is a vision document for our town. It is not the law. This is, this is laying out what the people envision our, our town to be in the next 10, 20 years. And so small town charm, the way it is, or what, a big message, at least that I have heard, it was a message that I was elected on the first term and the second term. And so I would like to see that go through for sure. And because I think that plays a large part of it. I see what's happening next door, what happened next door to where I live, I did not like it. That's one reason I ran. And that was a 60-foot parking garage, you know, that was there. I don't want to see any more of those. And so, let's see, other context, context, business, business, economic growth. We're not an island in the middle of a cornfield of a town where we're struggling to survive. We are doing really well, budgetarily speaking and business speaking. And a, a large majority of the people that live here are federal employees who are bringing their salaries into this town and spending it here. It's not like we're all struggling to, to, to make things happen. And so while yes, I do support business, I think we should have businesses. I don't think it should be always the, kind of the marker that we're looking for. Oh, is this going, will the 35 feet really affect that? I don't think it's going to be that big of an effect on it. So for me, I feel like I'm good to go on this and I really appreciate all the work that went into it. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Peggy?
All right, just a couple of things. To be clear, the 35 feet from grade, that's for existing construction and new construction, right? It's not like existing construction can put more feet on and new construction has to be at 35 feet.
It applies equally.
Okay, great. Just so you're sure. Okay, thank you. And I do support the 35 feet, too. The commercial under residential, I think that's a fantastic idea for the commercial areas where we will continue to have pods of businesses to go to that you can walk from one to the other, but still allow some people to live there because what else do you want to do with the space above them? I think that's a great idea. I mean, it can be a business next to a person living in some of these cases. As far as building on the open spaces, I'm interested to see, I have to get further into it to see what is the trade-off between them. So for example, if you have a piece of ground, can you build end-to-end? Or do we have a formula for, so much of that ground has to be open space, you know, sort of like with Ridgefield where they have that cup, you know, those acres of land that was put aside as a sanctuary, basically, because they were putting houses on the whole other side of the mountain. So that's something I'm interested to know more about. When they're building new buildings, can they cover every square inch? Or must they have some kind of permeable ground around? And my last comment is, there's been a number of remarks about previous construction done for infrastructure, you know, like sewer lines that were put out that were never used because things weren't built there. And I don't think that we, if something was done in the past with an intent, that we have to actually stay, say yes, then we must build there. Because things that were going on at that time aren't things that are going on at this time. And philosophies change as far as how to handle growth and how to handle building. So I don't, you know, it was a good idea then, maybe it's not a good idea now. We don't always have to live based on what we did in the past, or, you know, we still have horse and buggy, which might be fun, but, you know, quite the mess to clean up. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Peggy. And that is an interesting point that you make, you know, there are, I, I was in, I was in this building 30 years ago, and, and there were people that sat here 30 years ago that had plans that really nobody agrees with nowadays. And that's, you know, that's normal, you know? You have somebody sitting here and he had his own interests and he had plans and, but that's not the case 30 years later. I mean, everybody knows, knows that. So to, to steal the phrase from Keith, okay, you know, what we do have here is a vision document. We don't need to get too hung up on this just yet, you know? It's a vision document. We're going to take it up next Thursday. If there's any changes, it'll happen then. I'm really glad to hear from the entire council. It was, you know, great. And if, if somebody wants to give us a final comment, that's great. And then we'll move on to the American Rescue Plan funding. So if anybody?
I would offer one very quick final comment. Been a lot of thanks going around to the planning and zoning team, which I think is, is due. But I, I'm also just going to make one other comment, which is, you know, I really respect the thoughts and opinions that my fellow council members have expressed. Most of them were not in agreement with me, and damn it, that's okay. Because they came from the heart and they were well thought out, and I respect that. So I'm not sure where my suggestions will go, and that's a conversation to be had. But however this ends up, I respect what, what others have said here tonight. Thank you.
That's what makes us a great group. Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I always find it very informative to hear other points of view that maybe hadn't occurred to me. So I appreciate that discussion. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I would just like to add on that I'm in support of the resident, residential above the business. You know, if there's, that's good economic development, there's, you know, we talked for years and years and trying to find, figure out ways to bring businesses into town, small businesses. Be interested in having a conversation if somebody had some ideas there to do. Thank you.
Thanks. I really appreciate hearing everything everybody has to say as well. I do. Some things I have strong opinions, but appreciate it all. Thanks.
I just also would like to say, I'm glad to see the interest from the town, that there is interest in the town about the planning and zoning from different areas and different people around. I think that's a great thing because, you know, we live here with them and we're here to serve them. So it's good that they feel they're speaking up for this. Thank you.
Good, and thank you. And before we, we move on, I just want to ask if, if anybody has, wants to make a comment on the, on the, on the, on the public comments that we, you know, received. We've, we've seen it all, we've looked at all this, if anybody, if we, if we, if we care to say something about, about that, then I guess, you know, take a second and do it. So I'll begin with you, Charlie.
I mean, I've been through it all, although this, this letter is new, but everything else I've been through, we have online. It's nice to see some engagement. I'd always like to see more, but I have nothing to add from my thoughts based on what I've read.
Thank you.
Ditto here. I've read all the comments, listened in on a lot of the planning and zoning commissions, YouTube meetings. I always appreciate, just like we said a moment ago, I appreciate hearing contradictory point of views. So that's always good. Thank you.
I appreciate the public comment as well.
Yes, some of the written responses that we've received are strong, strong comments. I know that a couple of the letters that we've received, I've read multiple times, just to glean additional perspective from them, or to make sure that my initial assertion was correct. Don't have any additional comments at this time.
No, I appreciate the public comment as well. I didn't, if there are factual errors that were brought up, will those need to be changed? Or?
In the public comment?
Yeah.
I think you just let it roll.
Okay.
I mean, people are going to say things that aren't true in public comment.
No, no, I meant if they pointed out something in the comprehensive plan that was not necessarily correct, are we going to change that?
No, I think you just keep the public comment where it is and, and you just do your job as a professional.
All right. Well, no further comments. Thank you.
And lastly, Peggy?
Well, actually, I already made my comment on the public comment, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on. American Rescue Plan funding. Holly, you want to lead off with that?
Sure. So Dale has actually provided a memo to Town Council. We've provided additional information to all of Town Council about the ARP funding, the qualifications for the ARP funding projects. And staff has made a recommendation in terms of how we think is best to allocate the money. And so Dale, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you if you had any further details per your memo.
No, just, I, I think everyone's aware, but just to add, we've received 3 million so far. We'll get the other close to 3 million mid-year. We have to commit to the funds by the end of '24, spend them by the end of '26. As Holly mentioned, the town staff has come up with a recommendation based on the final rule that was published by Treasury, and it specifically states that we can take the entire amount that we've received as a one-time allowance for reimbursement. And so that's what we're proposing, we do.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, we got a lot of great ideas from, from the council, and I think it's, it was great, it was great to hear from everybody, just to have, have your thoughts. I will, and we'll, we'll take them into consideration as we move forward. In fact, I, more than that, I, I mean, you know, I said from the very start that I really like to see the, you know, the end result of how we do this, to have a, for every, every council member to have, have their finger in the pie, you know, to have it represented as, as all. And I read what the council, you know, recommended with, with you guys. And then I, I sort of held off on, on my initial thoughts, which I'll share with you all now. And I do, not that I don't appreciate each and every one of your ideas. And it's pretty simple, as mayor, you know, infrastructure. I see that being the, you know, wisest way to make sure that we spend some, a good bit of this money. Infrastructure, I mean, I mean, moving forward, infrastructure is what it's all about, you know? A particular infrastructure item that I think we really need to address is, is stormwater management, you know? And, and I, I guess one thing that I gleaned, you guys probably already knew this, Jay, you knew that, I was, in my role as a commissioner on the, of the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission, they were, we were just talking about dredge. And, you know, you guys may know it or not, you know, they dredge at Poplar Island now, and they're already getting to starting what is called a mid-bay, you know, project. There's two islands, Baron and James, that are south of Poplar, that are going, that are going to have to be online by like 2030 because there will be no more room over here. And, you know, one of the big things about dredge, you know, there's many, you know, things that cause dredge, but they made it a point to, to say that, you know, stormwater mismanagement in, in towns and areas and counties that border the, the bay are, are one of the, the major reasons for all this dredge out there, that, you know, the state is, is, you know, buying up islands and putting, you know, dredge in there. And it really did hit, hit home to me because I know the problem, I see it, you know, we have it here. So I would probably say, if you said, okay, Pat, you, you want the council to have their, you know, two cents and on this, what's your, what's your two cents? And I did read it on some of yours, by the way. You know, I, I would say infrastructure, stormwater management in particular. So having said that, let's, let's just take some, some comments from the council, what your thoughts are.
I'm curious, just a process question here, are we gonna, is a proposal going to come out of this work session that we will vote on, on?
No, no, I was still.
Lots of time for that, yeah. As I understand this, as it was explained when we, when, when we met, we're sort of going to move some money around to allocate money for this particular bucket, which might free up some money in other, in other buckets? Is that a reasonable understanding?
Are you talking about how we're going to, you know, meet our obligation by?
Yeah, from Treasury and the way we reported. Yeah, Treasury, correct. We will take, based on the final rule, we can take a one-time $6 million allowance for the full amount that we're going to receive. They will reimburse us. They will come back and say, how did you spend those funds? We will provide funds like police deputies and fire, and that will cover the 6 million. And then those funds that are normally allocated and have been allocated in the past, that we'll be able to use the $6 million for. we'll be able to use the $6 million for. We are already up to about 2 million that I could report to Treasury for expenses that we've had.
Okay. Yeah, I think then really it'll be interesting to see where, I, I don't think we're going to have trouble coming up with the other four. It'll be interesting to see how that, how that plays out. One of the big projects that I know we've talked about is the, and Jay can probably talk to this some, is, is fixing the stormwater, the inverted pipe under Callums. I would assume that's pretty high on the priority list and certainly fits within your, what, what you're suggesting. So I guess I don't have any other comments other than I'll be anxious to see how it plays out and, and hope to have some input there, but.
Actually, Charlie's question was one of my questions, but just a clarification on, in the summary box, talks about Treasury will not address any compliance issues with the final rule if transactions are completed prior to April 1 of this year. Is that a correct date?
We have, the dates that Treasury has given us is March the 3rd of 2021 to December of 2024. Those are, we have to report back to Treasury for the reimbursement.
Okay, because this says any transactions are completed prior to April 1 of this year.
I will say, Larry, there's been a number of changes that has been with Evergreen, with Treasury, but the final rule states what I just shared.
Perfect. Thank you. So I have.
There's been some misinformation out there. Imagine that. Councilman Morris?
Yeah, it shouldn't be any surprise to anybody that I'm in support of Callums. I'm in support of Callums and I'm in support of Callums.
Tell us what you think next.
Yeah, particularly Callums. I know that we've got some stormwater management, it's one actually in the generator. I'll be interested to see what the progress is on that. Just trying to make sure that when we do get flooding back there, that it drains the best that it can, dries out. We're just trying to encourage, you know, that dry out in there. And we know that storms are going to continue to come. Outside of the stormwater management, I don't, I don't know what the plan is there. I know that some of the ideas for upgrading Callums, really most of the ideas for upgrading Callums are, they're superficial ideas. We're not talking about building condominiums down in there. We're talking about some fence realignment. I think that the town's experienced some minor fence alignment already, you know, how it can really change the complex of the usability down there. And having a hike bike path, if you will, around the outside of the fence, so we don't always have to be open for people to use it. That's ties into other walkable connections. I'm in favor of, well, really, everything that the, most of the things that the committee had come up with. And I don't think there's anything in there that's super expensive, I mean, if you will. I mean, in using the ARP funds as kind of a springboard to kind of get several of these projects out of the blocks. You know, I'm not an advocate of talking about great ideas and putting them on a shelf and not enacting on them. We want to, we, we have the wherewithal to accomplish, particularly with some of the walkability plants that we have, to pour some gas on some of that stuff. And let's get some of this stuff, let's get stuff designed, get that stuff on a shelf at least, and then let's push some of these projects forward so that folks can enjoy them in this decade. So I'll be interested to see how the, the conversation goes. And I'll be keenly listening for the word Callums in all of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks. So, yeah, spending the funds on infrastructure, stormwater management is important. A lot of important projects that have been laid out, so I look forward to discussing them more. I saw what everybody had suggested, and I'm looking forward to us coming together again and kind of reevaluating and talking about that more and getting a little more price points on those to kind of get a better idea of how much we really can do or can't do. Thanks.
Well, Callums, Callums, walkability, walkability, walkability.
Stormwater management.
And I would just point out, I had sent out, I'm not sure, I think everybody got it now because the first time it did work, the article from Railroad Trails regarding the gap. It's 150 miles long, every year 121 million into those communities. 121 million every year. And I look at our economics and what we want to do, and the whole idea of being able to connect Chesapeake Beach through walking trails and ride of ways, et cetera, to other communities outside of Chesapeake Beach, does help with health and economics. And it brings people into town without their cars. So that's, I'm hoping that we find some space in there, maybe to finish the railroad bridge and get the right of ways to do that. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks. And Will, this is something we'll be addressing as we go on. Thank you, council, for spending time on this. And thank you, Holly, as well. RFP, general cleaning services. You'll have Holly?
Yes, thank you. So the town released an RFP for general cleaning services. And we actually expanded the scope of work with this RFP to include the water park. The water park has not had professional cleaning services in the past, and we felt it was important with Carla's involvement also, to make sure that we have a deep clean and professional clean at the water park as well. We also made sure to include some additional quarterly cleaning for town hall and, and really ramp up our cleaning schedule here in this building also. So at this time, we are still working through the reference list, but we do believe that Modulus is going to provide the best service for the town. And we'll be bringing back some information on references for the town meeting.
Okay, good. Any questions on this?
No, I have no questions.
Yes. Question, should the restrooms at Callums, should that be included in here? Or why aren't they included in here?
That's a really good point. I think, I think that we could look at adding that service. Great idea.
That'd be a good idea. And then the other question I had was, any idea why there's such a dramatic difference in the costs between the town hall and the water park between the two quotes that are in here? I mean, that, that's, that's incredible difference.
Yes. Well, the water park, it's off-season, has very minimal use. So, so the cost there for off-season definitely makes sense. There's different flooring, which is likely a lot easier to clean.
No, what I meant is between the two bids.
Oh, you mean, okay, got it. The only thing I can say.
Water park, between the two, one of them is 26,400 and the other is 85,50.
Right. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Each bidder walked through the same exact thing. We provided building plans, so they knew the dimensions. The only thing I could say is that the first bid is from our current cleaning company. And so they substantially increased their costs from what they're providing for us now. So I'm not sure if that has anything to do with it, but I believe that Modulus has a clear idea of the scope of services and can provide the services we need.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one obvious question I had was, well, besides the, the one incumbent cleaning service that we're talking to, only one other cleaning company was interested in bidding?
We had four companies come to our mandatory pre-bid meeting. This went out on eMaryland Marketplace to over 100 local cleaning companies. I think, I think it is a challenge to get some of the larger companies to Chesapeake Beach. They might not have enough local business here. So I think primarily you only get interest from those that are maybe doing more residential in the area. But yes, we only received two bids out of, out of that outreach.
I understand the platform of eMaryland Marketplace, that getting competitive bids is important. It's not about necessarily getting the cheapest either. It's about getting somebody that's competent, that's going to give you the level of service that you, that you, that you need, that you're expecting. You know, which is really kind of underscores my only other comment that I had on the sheet was, I'm going to trust you all, I'm going to trust you all's leadership on this. I would certainly like to see, you know, another bid or two in here to help, kind of help us understand the disparity between the two pricing here. I mean, on one hand, you might say that Crofton Cleaning knows what they're getting into because they've been through it. I like the idea that Larry had regarding the bathrooms at Callums. But, yeah, other than that, I mean, the only thing I could say, if we're going to move forward with Modulus, modular, if we're going to move forward with them, is to be careful. You know, we have expectations and we have things that we need. And I'm in favor of trying to keep things clean, even though we're trying to get past COVID a little bit, who knows? We need to still emphasize being clean. It's not just coming in and vacuuming and doing these other things like this. I mean, there's, today's day and age now, you know, we're going to wipe a lot of stuff down, we're trying to sanitize things a little more than we ever have before, and that stuff's important. So I hope you find, I hope we get the cleaning company that rings our bell. And I appreciate hearing that word, Callums. Thank you.
No additional questions. Thank you.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I'm, I'm sorry, just very, very quickly, because Larry had a great idea, so I just want to say Callums too. But I, and I'm joking a little bit, but I, that's a great idea. So I would support that, making sure that's in there too. K E.
Okay. I, I can't read the first word. It says field storm drainage. Maybe Greg can help me with that.
Callum Stormwater Management?
Okay.
Holly, sure. Yes, and, and Wayne has made a point to be here this evening, so I'm going to make sure he is able to address Town Council. But basically, we're bringing forward the start to a lot of what the conversations have been with improving stormwater management to make sure the Callums complex is maintained. So Jay and Wayne, I'm actually going to turn this over to you.
So I think Councilman Morris and Councilman Think, Holly and herself, we walked around, looked at some areas out there. I'm not sure if everyone on the council is familiar with, I'm going to say, the first part of what we need to do to de-water from the tot lot heading north across the field and all the way to where the stormwater outfalls at the facility, which is actually, you would think it would go south towards Fishing Creek in the bay. All the stormwater at the facility actually goes north across the field. Then it comes around just east of Bayview Hills and goes through what's called Pawpaw Gut and eventually dumps into Fishing Creek. And that's one of the reasons why such a big area has very minimal fall, because it has to overcome over 700 feet to get to the creek where it exhausts. One of the things from being over there is the existing stormwater lines are holding water. The outfall is inverted. And the existing outfall where it dumps into a marsh is also silted and enraised, and the sea level has risen. So there's a lot of issues in the existing stormwater line. We're proposing to cut that distance by starting out at the same inlet and going northwest with a new line where we can achieve a little bit more fall, where in theory downstream of the outfall. It's going to take some work from MDE, which Wayne is working on. We know the dimensions. I've done some preliminary budgetary numbers. And I look at this to grab, to give you a synopsis. Everything over there is saturated. You think about a sponge cape sitting in milk. We need to de-water that before we can really move forward with any project, including the tot lot. You know, I'm not over there doing surveys, and Wayne has done them, but when I look in a storm drain and I see bull minnows, I know it's tied directly into tidal water. And, and it literally is like that. So things have changed over a little bit of time. I've worked for the town. And sea level's rising, where these things are outfalling is silting in and growing. You have Maryland Department of Environment, you have the Corps of Engineers that regulate what we can do in these outfalls. And as of now, we're not allowed in there with equipment. So we're, we're by hand dredging this north end. And I'm, and I'm sure, and Wayne will find out when he goes to the permit, the 1972 plan says the tide stopped right about where third base would be on the, on the big ball field if you went straight through. So you're going to have both the state and the feds come in because now we're trying to outfall there. The 72 plan says it's tidal from here downstream, but the new plan is obviously tidal up north. So there's a lot of agencies that you got to check the boxes. We have a plan. I think it's going to help. And once we achieve this de-watering of that, we can look forward to not only working more cost effective in these other areas, but with using the existing material instead of trying to haul out this material that maybe if we de-water is good. If that makes any sense. As far as the numbers and stuff, Holly, I don't know if it's on there because I don't have that exact sheet in front of me. But if there's any questions, or Wayne, if you want to add some comments to it?
Sure. So in furtherance of, of this mission, we have begun the Maryland Department of Environment process to gain access to that outfall point, to lower the outfall location to allow the water to drain. If you've been out there recently, you'll see little red flags, little pink flags, where we've actually flagged the breakpoint between tidal and non-tidal wetlands. That'll be located next week, and we have a meeting set up with MDE to check whether they're going to take jurisdiction. I'm sure MDE will. And the Corps of Engineers will also be there. They will likely not take jurisdiction, in my opinion. It's not an eligible waterway. With that, once that determination is, is made and they've determined that our delineation is appropriate, we will begin the permit process. So we're moving that along quite, quite, quite well. So I would expect in the next month or two, you'd see some plans from us that is what MDE would agree to, and we'll move forward with the project to de-water the Callums.
Question, did you, Holly has something to say?
Sorry, just wanted to add as well, just for council's awareness, that as part of this plan and to really de-water that field, we do have to address the ball field. And, and Wayne, could you cover that a little?
Sure. So what you have out there on the ball field is you have, you have, it's, it's a typical multipurpose field. You have a field which houses for baseball and also houses for, for football, or we'll call it rectangular sports. Could be soccer, could be lacrosse. And they have competing crowns, if you will, which basically means water has to go in a different way for each, each sport. So a rectangular field, soccer, football, lacrosse, you want the crown to go across the middle. For baseball, you want it to go from home plate out. What you have out there is two competing crowns, and they create pockets of water. Because they were graded that way, and they were graded appropriately for the sport, but in reality, it creates a pocket of water. So recommending some re-grading out there to allow those pockets of water to be removed. That would effectively change the, the crown of the baseball field or maybe even eliminate its use. So it's just one of the recommendations, recommendations we are suggesting.
Thanks. If council has any questions, I'll start.
When you put a new pipe in, what happens to the old pipe?
So the old pipe will likely be abandoned in place and stay there. The new pipe will go in a different route.
Thank you.
No questions, thanks.
I think I want to underscore what the question is here, and the reason we brought that up. And I know there's going to be public outreach regarding any changes to Callums. I know that what they're getting at is a regrade of the large baseball diamond that's out there. I know that recently, past couple of years, the town repurposed the small baseball diamond. All things considered, I'm in favor of getting rid of the large baseball field for the greater good of that space in there. Taking it out of there is not something that I take lightly, though. It's something that we do want to have public outreach regarding some of these sorts of things. And I'm interested in what all of my colleagues have to say about that. And I'll mention again regarding MDE and Army Corps of Engineers and this environment. I'm glad to hear you, seems like you've, you know what you're doing, number one. Say that you've, you feel pleased with the progress. That's, that's, that's great news to hear. But I would encourage, if I was at the meeting, I would find a little spot to encourage them looking forward here, having flexibility with these encroaching tides, the rules and the laws that MDE and that Army Corps have been working from for a long time. And these things are always changing a little bit. And these things are always changing a little bit. They're gonna need to be changing and adapting some things. We can't, we can't, they can't. They need to be cautious of being inflexible as they can have known to be. With climate change and sea level rise, they're gonna need to massage some of these things that they've done before, like Jay mentioned, can't get equipment out in this one area. Well, you know, we need to get a little more realistic state about um, our ability to operate and to adjust things, um, as this body sees fit in any, guiding committee that, that's looking at this stuff. Don't, um, and I'm sure I'll be discouraged because the government red tape discourages me every day. But, um, that doesn't mean that we don't push out on that. And they, they have to know because we're not the only ones. I mean, anybody on the water, they're looking for some flexibility. I mean, they need to push out and it's okay to push MDE and, and just say, hey, this is 2022 and, uh, this stuff is coming and, uh, you know, help us out. So I appreciate your work. Look, look forward to getting an update and thank you.
Sure. Greg?
Sort of building on, uh, my colleague, Councilman Morris's comments, uh, I'll ask the obvious and I'm sure you have done this, but, uh, obviously the only way the drainage works is if we have a freefall at the outfall. And I hope that we are looking at the future flood levels as we design that pipe and the outfall so we can, I'm sure we won't have it all the time during wet weather conditions, but hopefully during most of it so that we actually get the drainage that we're hoping to achieve by rerouting that pipe. So, thank you.
I have a question and then hopefully a follow-up comment. The question I have is, uh, is will, will the pipe replacement be destructive? So what, what I really mean by that is does, does the fact that we need to do this, uh, for almost as a precursor to even evaluating what we can, what else we might be able to do with the space, the fact that we have to do this sooner rather than later, um, does it force our hand on making decisions, uh, or, or will most of this be done in a non-destructive way? Ie, could we do this and leave all the fields the way they are right now today?
Um, when you say, do you mean the actual installation of the pipe itself?
Yeah.
Uh, I expect there will be excavation across the field, uh, to install the pipe. Uh, it's just gonna be that flat that it couldn't be directionally drilled, if you will. It's also gonna be a larger pipe than we want to directionally drill it that flat. Uh, so I expect there will be destruction of the field. We will, of course, put it back the way it, it began. The question about the drainage with, with, with the baseball field versus the football field, that's a different discussion. Um, that will be at the end of the project, whether they're gonna have a usable baseball field or we're not. Um, and that'll be determined based upon the grades when we, when we actually take a look at where the water wants to go.
But would likely need to be done, those grading decisions at least would likely, likely ought to be made before the repair of the excavation?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just gonna, um, uh, reiterate one more time, and I have done this a number of times, uh, echoing a little bit of what Greg said, but maybe just wind in a back a step. The town will have missed an opportunity if we do not engage someone with a vision like RKNK. I'm not specifying that vendor by any stretch, simply noting that, uh, someone that has done this kind of work and RKNK hap- uh, happened to be the organization to do the walkability study. We will miss an opportunity, in my opinion, if we do not engage someone to provide us that level of vision for what we could do with that space. And, um, I sort of felt like there was a precursor to that, which was the work that Wayne, you and, and your team were doing, not with the stormwater replacement, but in, in evaluating some very basic things about the space, where water's gonna land, what's feasible and so on. Um, so I'm just gonna lobby for that again. Um, it sounds like maybe that process should happen a little sooner rather than later because we may wanna make decisions or have some ideas before we finalize the pipe replacement. Again, tell me if I'm incorrect here, because repairing the fields from the, uh, the dam, the excavation that's going to be done may, we may wanna, may have that be an informed decision to some degree and it, and I'm not sure we're going to at the pace that project's moving versus, um, uh, the notion of having someone come in and do a, a more robust vision study, I'm gonna say, instead of feasibility study. So, um, I'll stop there, but thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we have MOU, the Maryland Department of Human Services. Somebody gives you an overview of what that's all about?
Sure, thank you. Um, so the, we have before you, uh, the MOU with the Maryland Department of Human Services, and this is basically in agreement with the state. Todd has gone over the MOU and made significant changes to it to get it how we need it for the town. Um, but basically, it's a program, uh, that the state would qualify individuals that require, uh, utility billing assistance and, uh, in essence, just pay the town for the utility bill. So it's, it's an arrangement with the state, um, to accomplish, uh, paying utility bills for those most in need in our town.
This one actually could be right in. Um, is this brand new? This MOU? We've never done anything like this before or is this just an extension of something we've done before?
This is new.
Okay. Um, do we have an idea how many people are in arrears? I don't, I mean, you don't have to get into arrears to need assistance, but they do talk about people being in arrears this is to help for. So do we have a significant amount of that?
We do not. It's definitely less than 10%.
Okay, great. Um, and then I have a few questions on some of the, the requirements here. So they have, the people themselves will apply for this grant? Is that how they get identified to the state for this money?
Yes, through the state.
Okay, great. And, um, at, and at the very back in number 20, miscellaneous terms and conditions. So the town has to notify the department within 30 days of any change in address of business that affects the payment of grants to the town? So if somebody's it, businesses, business operations?
I think that, that's just us as the utility, um, payment operator. So, so it, that would, I think that is, if we, we wouldn't change address. So I, and Todd, tell me if I'm incorrect, but that's just basically covering them that we wouldn't move, uh, and not provide their address.
Correct. I mean, it doesn't require an obligation to us, but, but if we know about it, we let them know that they stop.
Okay, because that was a similar one with the, um, uh, number 10. Um, if the assistance person has died or moved from the area and there's nobody left in the house, we have to refund the money if it gets paid out, which makes sense, but how do we know? I mean, if somebody dies, you know, maybe, but you don't necessarily know that they're getting assistance without doing a lot of cross-checking and you don't know if somebody else is living in the house without doing a lot of cross-checking.
I think the key is the fact that money's still gonna be coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, so if money's coming in and we're, and that's holding it, then we have an obligation to return.
But can we identify it?
We, we do know when properties transfer, so our, our office is, is notified. There's a, a whole utility transfer process, so we would know, know at that point.
And then people will re-up every year, so happily if they get better off, then they don't have to do it anymore. Okay, so that's just something you know. Um, and, um, number three, the scope? Just working from the back front. Uh, the, um, the town residents, does, the town gets the water, the town gets the money or the people get the money and pay the town?
So the town would receive the money on their behalf, so we would credit their account, on their behalf.
But it wouldn't necessarily be 100%. So let's say it's $100 a month, you get $8 to help them pay. They don't pay the other 20, it could lead, still lead to a termination. Is that what that's saying?
The theory is that the grant's gonna cover it all.
Okay.
That is, and, and the purpose of that, I mean, that's one of the, that number three is one of the things that I've changed dramatically to limit as, as totally as possible any obligations to the town, really, and any obligations. So basically, all the town's doing is accepting.
Because here it says the failure of state residents to pay utility, which I assume is town residents, to pay the utility may lead to a termination of services.
Well, it just leaves that for some reason the state doesn't pay.
Oh, okay. The failure of the state to pay means we could lead to, we could do a termination of service.
Or for some reason they get, they get, um, they have a program. Or if the state for any reason decides to discontinue the program, uh, to make sure the town sees somebody's still.
So the failure of the state to pay the residents bill. Okay. Um, all right, great. Um, and then if you could go section two?
You are going backwards, are you?
I am.
I liked it.
Um, section two, the second paragraph. There's this whole part, uh, that with, so you could get a check per household or you could get one check for all the households or five households? Like, let's say we have 20 households. You could get one check, you could get 20 checks, you could get seven checks. And we just need to know which check covers, will we know which check covers which household?
Well, sure, they'll be a break, they'll break down.
No, no. Okay, great. And my last question is on the front page is to Dale. Do you foresee this being an extra burden on the Treasury Department and accounting to do these calculations? I mean, we only have 10% or less people and they won't all apply, so maybe we'll have five, but do you anticipate this will be an extra burden on your department?
I think with the help of Connie's utility billing, it would just be part of our process. So, no.
And for Connie? Is it something that will, that she needs to do too much more work on?
No, we're accepting payments for utility bills. So since, since the state is going to be qualifying these individuals and, and paying the bill directly to the town, it would be just collecting the funds just like we would if the person paid it.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Great questions. Um, no, that, my one question was just how the town felt about the burden and so that's been answered and it sounds like a great program, a win-win, so thanks.
This is a question from Todd or Holly. How long has the state had this same program?
It's new. It's, it's very new, yes.
It's a brand new program. How did we come to, to know about the program?
There's a couple, um, webinars. The state had a really great outreach. They, they contacted the town, they held webinars, training programs as well.
Um, Todd, um, you have any concerns about the document? I know that it sounded like you made, you maneuvered a little bit and that all sounded good.
And I could tell you, if, if I can follow up with number three, because number three basically. This, the town, as far as any work, the only, the only thing that the town's gonna be doing is accepting payment. And then second sentence there, the town does not have any obligation. The town shall not determine eligibility in the program. Not gonna determine eligibility, gonna determine anything. All the town's doing is sitting back and these individuals are eligible within the program as determined by the state. The state's gonna pay bill and that is it. When, when this first came to me, I, I picked the phone call, you know, I had a what is this moment, um, because it did have a lot of allegations that was expected of the town to be reported. As, and Holly basically called the states and made me change. Basically, like I said, all that's being done is, you have the accounts that the state sets up, they pay the term eligibility and they send it.
Yes, and I would say thank you to Todd for making all those changes to make this agreement very workable.
Yeah, well, it sounds like, um, it sounds like a good job. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two questions. One is, I notice, uh, in the actual MOU, the last page says page seven of nine. What happened to the other two pages?
Yep, that, that was an error. There is no, uh, Sharon had mentioned that there is no eight or nine, uh, so, so we will, we'll correct that in the final, final version. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. And then my other question, uh, will this also apply to our user jurisdictions, North Beach, Calvert County, Anarono County?
Only if they agree to participate.
So it's up to them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
The only question I have, which I didn't have coming into the meeting, but I have now, is, um, does our water, uh, utility fund, uh, put us at risk of not qualifying for this? Or is that really each individual, so it doesn't matter?
No, it, it does not put us at risk for not qualifying.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Hold on, please. If, once Charlie's done.
Yes.
Are you done? Okay. Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, um, I guess to underscore, since it's a new program, um, many times you have these good ideas. They kinda put it together and you kinda roll it out. And it's expected that there to be changes. There's expected that when it gets into different, under different purviews, different people are looking at it in different perspectives, um, that that program will evolve. And a lot of, and a lot of times I find out, um, I do some recent experiences at, at work with using new tracking software and, and different things. When it's new, you end up sometime, not that we're the only ones that are gonna be using the program, but it's, it's kinda new and so the state is looking for feedback to make it better, um, to make it all it needs to be. Um, and so I appreciate pushing back. I mean, that's good advice, having it suit us. And it's not just to suit us, but it's to make it for a better program for everybody that's using it. So, thank you.
Just one additional question. So will, will the town be advertising this to our residents in some way, shape or form so they know this program exists if, if?
But we'll work with the state and see if they have any, um, templates that we can use, but definitely we'll, we'll work to get the word out.
Yeah, okay, great.
Very good. Uh, what I'm gonna do right now, uh, everybody is, is flip this a bit in, in the interest of safety, quite frankly, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, uh, do the council lightning round. So we're done with all the, the, the town business. Hold the closed session right in here. We have nobody in the room. So we'll do the council lightning round, we'll, we'll lock the doors and we'll do the closed session right here so we have more space. So I'll, I'll, um, or Charlie?
Yeah, two, two things real quick on the, uh, lightning round. First of all, um, walkability projects, uh, you know, Kellums, 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 great, go get a T-shirt. Um, walkability, 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 that rolls off the tongue. Um, I, I wanna just state here for the, uh, for my own sanity, for questions that Peggy and I have been going back and forth on, um, the challenge of moving projects from paper, from, from concept to execution. And, uh, you know, we're doing our best, we're, we're, I know the town staff is doing their best and we just wanna continue to, to try to move that forward. And, and I know we, we get hit with barriers constantly and it's, it's interesting hearing you guys talk about the, what, what is to me a, a project that, that is just an absolute necessity and the hardest part of the, I, I won't say the hardest part or put words in your mouth, but one big challenge is figuring out who, what agency needs, what box is checked and then getting them checked. And I know that's the same for us. Every, everything we wanna do falls into that category. So, um, we appreciate, we and I, I, I will let council, uh, my, my co-chair speak to this on, on her lightning round, appreciate the effort, um, and just recognize that you may hear from, from others and, and it's frustr- we're all frustrated, but we recognize the effort that everyone's putting in. Um, second point that I wanna make, uh, I don't know, some, some of you think of April 15th as tax day. Most of you know that's been moved to April 18th. Not so. Larry's birthday, which is April 15th, and it's a big one, folks. It's 21. So we're gonna take Larry out to a couple of the pubs, uh, on Friday. Anyone who, uh, wants to, wants to join, you're gonna buy Larry a drink on his 21st birthday. Thank you.
I thought you were gonna buy all the drinks for Larry on his birthday.
That's probably how it'll end up.
Yeah, probably. Thank you. Larry?
Um, just wanted to thank and compliment everyone on the discussions on these issues tonight.[1762.21] Just wanted to thank and compliment everyone on discussions on these issues tonight. I know there are differing opinions, and it's good to hear the different views come into play here. And then sort of building on Charlie's comment, I just wanted to wish a happy birthday to Town First Lady Judy Mahoney and Town Administrator Holly Wall on Monday, April 18th. Happy birthday.
Well, I guess I have to say, I said it before, but it's interesting that Larry and my son Patrick share the same birthday, April the 15th, and he's a little closer to 21, I think, than you, so maybe we'll bring him down for the free drinks, you know? But he'd probably cost Charlie more money, so maybe not, you know? And yeah, it is funny that my wife and our town administrator are both born on the 18th, as my sister says, the two women to tell you what to do, Pat. I didn't argue, I didn't say anything. So yeah. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to take this opportunity to underscore the, still just the first meeting that the Climate Advisory Board has had? Is that right? I did watch the meeting. Larry is excellent around the meetings. I'll be interested, and I know they have an aggressive schedule, that's some really serious business that they're going to be digging into, and looking forward to seeing how that progresses, what you all come up with, price tags and things like that. I know that, I was impressed with the steering committee, the makeup of the steering committee that was put together. It's an unbearable who's who of waterfront individuals. Businesses are included and private individuals, I thought that was all good. Next month, the water park is opening up. Next month, the water park is opening up. I know we're in spring, and it's a great, it's, every season is a great, great season here in the town of Chesapeake Beach, so everybody have a good weekend.
If you will, and they're throwing baseball, so that's a great thing, too.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy birthday who's been mentioned tonight, and it's like, I know, it's like, I can't keep track of them all, there was a lot. So, but anyway, I do wish you the best. Also, the Health and Wellness Fair is coming up in about a month, and so I hope that's on your calendar. I would give you the date, but I don't remember it off my head. Thank you. And the 14th. And again, Holly and Carla have been doing a great job of trying, moving that along, and I really appreciate all their help on that. And so with that, you all have a great evening.
Very much. Ashley, Peggy?
I just want to say that the utility, the MOU, to get on the utility assistance program, I think it's fantastic. I mean, I know I had a lot of questions on it, but that you, we are taking the time to extend this benefit to our residents, I think it's beautiful. I think that's just really so fantastic. And I hope that when it comes out, if we can find a way within the town to have assistance for people who want to apply, if there's some way where we can have somebody that can do something like that, because a lot of times when you're in the situation where you need to apply for something in the government, that is very intimidating. So if there's a way that when we are putting it out to the town that this is available using the state's template or whatever, if there's a way behind that that we can say, and if you want assistance with this, here's a way you can do it in town. You don't have to go, you know, to your state senator or something to find it. I think that would also be great.
In a very kind way, yeah.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Listen, right now, I would ask if we have a motion to close the meeting under statutory authority of Maryland Annotated Code pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305B, subsection 3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related heretofore. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? So at this time, are our doors locked here? Have we turned off the? A bio break is a wonderful thing.
It was good to see everybody.
You want to hang around, Jay, for this? You can, we're going to do it here, you can go home. I'll ask, I'll ask the rest of staff to stay, if you will. Thanks, Wayne.